Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call this meeting to order at seven?
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five. Thank you so much. If you can and if you will, would you please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag with us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, I need a roll call, please.
Altonan Lockett.
Present.
Altonan Anthony Davis.
Here.
Altonan Bacardo Spidey.
Here.
Altonan John Edwards.
Here.
Altonan Tyron Preston, Mr. Stephen Passon, President Stephen Burns, Mr. Stephen Passon, Mayor David Ford.
Present. Okay, at this time, Pastor can lead us in order of prayer.
Okay. If I may just make a quick statement before the prayer. I just want to mention our church will be giving out food on Thursday, November 16th. We're located at forty-three fifty West one hundred and eightieth Street. That's Jeremiah Temple Church at eleven a.m. We will be giving out our pre-Thanksgiving food drive. Shall we pray? Thank you, Mayor. I would bless the Lord at all times. His praise shall continually be in my mouth. My soul shall make her boast in the Lord. The humble shall hear thereof and be glad. Oh, magnify the Lord with me, and let us exalt his name together. We come thanking the Lord for this day and thanking the Lord for our mayor, our council members, our fire department, our police department. We thank God for the residents of Country Club Hills and everyone who make up this great city. May God bless our residents. May God bless our troops, and may God bless America. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please note, if you know anyone that's in need of food for this holiday that's coming up, make sure you have them to go to the church, Jeremiah Temple, and receive some free Thanksgiving food. Okay, with that in mind, I want to... Oh, general proceedings.
Approval of administrative city council meeting minutes October 2nd, 2023, and also the regular city council meeting minutes October 9th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably second, motioned and second. Are there any questions, corrections to the minutes? Okay, here are no corrections, no questions. Roll call, please.
Altonan Lockett.
Yes.
Altonan Davis.
Yes.
Altonan Spidey.
Yes.
Altonan Edwards.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have communications and reports by the mayor.
Mayor, we're gonna skip A. I wasn't able to, I didn't know that it made the agenda, so I wasn't able to reach out to Reverend Dr. Charles Harris Davis, I'm sorry, and family.
Okay.
For the recognition.
So will they be able to come?
On the next council meeting.
They'll be able to come after the next meeting?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, we'll go to B. I would like to announce the 2023 Holiday Food Drive. As you know, when you came in the lobby, we are collecting food for the homeless and the needy families over this next week and a half or so, so that we can support the food pantries in this area. I think our father-in-law delivered some groceries today. She's waving her hand back there. PD department and also our staff, we all will be bringing in canned goods and items that would be appropriate for this holiday coming up. So please, please, please come and help us to fill the sled up and be able to help us to feed the needy and the hungry. With that said, I would like to introduce some of our guests today. And the reason I have... The reason I have the guests here today is because, you know, during the year, especially when it gets close to election time, of course, you know, the next election is not until March, but I have a lot of residents asking me about judges. Who are these judges? Because when you go to the poll, you get a whole list of them, and nobody really knows who they are. And so I have a couple of judges here that I want to know, want you to know who they are, and so I brought them out tonight so that we can introduce them to you. And I think this is gonna be good because, like I said, I always get those questions. Who should I vote for? Who are these judges? And I can't tell you who to vote for, but I can let you know that there are some very good judges out there that we need to support. So I want to start with Judge John Fairman. I don't know if you all know him or not. He's here in the Southland. Does a lot in the communities.
Here. Good evening, everyone. Mayor, thank you for the invitation. I think everyone here, at least for the council members with Altonan, if you have not received, I sent something out, but I have more than enough, as well as for the residents here. My name is John Fairman. I've been here in the area for well over fifteen years. If you all know the bank building on one hundred and eighty-third and Dixie Highway, the U.S. Bank Building, I had that building for about fifteen years. I had the largest owned minority law firm in the state of Illinois in Indiana, so I had twenty-two attorneys work for me, thirty staff members. We did mostly civil litigation, but I did a lot of cases, a large amount at Markham Bridge Courts as well, a lot of municipal work. But married for over twenty years. We have five kids we raise, three of our own. Our oldest who has autism, which leads to my work with mental health. I am one of the emergency mental health judges for the Southwest suburbs. If anybody has someone who has autism, dementia, schizophrenia, or just a situation where they're not taking the medication, it's an undiagnosed situation, that's something that would and should come to me, as opposed to the situation where you end up calling the police under some emergency situation and coming in not knowing what's going on. That's stuff that should come to me, where I can order them over to the hospital, whether or not they need to be committed just for an hour or two, just to take the medication or a day or two. Mental health is something that thankfully we've had more recognition of, but I've had everybody from doctors, lawyers, dentists, police officers, teachers. It affects everyone. And I'm proud to say that many of them have gotten right back on the right track and are productive people within the community. You would never know, some of the people who you go to for service, it affects everyone. The head of the Illinois State Bar Association, the largest bar in the state, just wrote a piece on the fact that he has, sees a therapist on a regular basis. There's nothing to be ashamed about, something that happens on a regular basis, but that is the work that I do. I also preside over all excrement cases for about thirty-five to forty municipalities. And lastly, I'll just say, I am, because my oldest has autism, it's personal for me, working on building a school out here in the South suburbs. I just got about three different locations on Harlem. It's something that about fifty municipalities, fifty school districts would all feed into. Right now, it happened because my son ended up going out to city. It's one way, an hour one way, hour back. Naperville, the largest school district, it's an hour and a half that way, hour and a half back. We have nothing out here, which means that all of the kids from our communities either forced to go into, this is for autism, special education, or homeschool. Keep in mind, you've had everyone from Bill Gates to Elon Musk to several other folks who have autism contribute to great things in this community or in society. But if our kids don't get the resources that they need, they end up being in this place. So that's something that I'm working on. Like I said, we have the locations now, and I've, on my birthday, I was blessed, I'd say, the unions told me I get the location, they'll build it for free. So I do have election going on, which is on March nineteenth, but after that is where I'm gonna hone in on my real work in regards to what my passion is. But I won't take up too much time, Mayor. Thank you for the invitation. I look forward to speaking to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Judge. Next, I would like to introduce Judge Walker.
Evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm Judge Allen Walker. I currently sit in the General Chancery Division of the Circuit Court of Cook County. I like my colleague here, John. We're both associate judges, and we're running for full circuit court seats. As I've said, I've been a judge for eleven years, and my assignments have been, as I said, I currently sit in the General Chancery Division of the Circuit Court of Cook County, which hears cases which are not, folks are not asking for remedies, monetary remedies, but they're asking for equitable remedies, which means if you own a business with a partner and you have a falling out and you want the business to end and you can't agree on how to do it, those cases come to me. If you've had an administrative hearing, let's say with the Illinois Department of Children and Family Services, and you don't like the outcome, that appeal would come to me. If you have a partner and you're in a relationship and you have a puppy, and you guys can't agree on who gets the puppy, I just found out that that case comes to me. Prior to that, I sat in the Law Division for about four years, hearing cases in which people were actually seeking monetary damages over the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Prior to that, I sat in the Mortgage foreclosure Division of the Circuit Court of Cook County during the mortgage foreclosure crisis, and you guys can imagine how exciting that was since each judge in that division had about eight thousand cases. Now, not only am I, not only do I sit in General Chancery, but I am also a member of the Illinois Supreme Court's Committee on Judicial Education. I am the vice chair of the Illinois Supreme Court's Committee on Illinois Evidence, and I am the president-elect of the Illinois Judicial Council. Now, the Illinois Judicial Council is the organization of African-American judges for also. And one of the things that we do, and I've done since I was first got on the bench, is I have a program that provides high school students out in the Southland and the city of Chicago with an opportunity to work with judges in chambers. So we send out an invitation to most of, if not all of the high schools in the Southland and the city of Chicago, invite them to have their students apply to, for the program. And what it does is it teaches job skills, interview skills, and it actually provides the students with an opportunity to sit in chambers with judges, to watch what they do, to learn how they do it. They also have an opportunity to interact with the lawyers who are not only on our staff, but who appear in front of us, to talk with them about profession and what happens there. I've run this program since I've been on the, pretty much since I've been on the bench, and it has expanded. Also, the other thing we do is we go out to the high schools during Law Week, and we speak to the students about, choose relating to the law, our careers and so forth. And one of the reasons that we do that is because we firmly believe that you can't be what you can't see. And we want our students, our children, to be able to see us and know who we are and know what we do, and realize that we are pretty much like them. We grew up like them, and therefore they can be like us if they choose to. The other thing I want to add is that I've been married for forty-one years to the same And as I say, I've loved her before she was born. Now, before y'all get carried away, she frequently tells me that she never liked me. But, you know, that's personal. But that is pretty much who I am. I also have five children. That's who I am. I also just want to mention that Altonan Davis and I went to the same high school and graduated the same year, but I'm older than he is. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, judges, and these are judges that you should know. And so, thank you. Let's give them a round of applause, please.
No. That means applause, yeah.
Okay, moving on with the agenda. At this time, we have a city clerk's report. Is there a report? No report, city clerk. Okay, let's go to committee reports. First committee we have up tonight is the Finance Committee. Finance Chair, Altonan Lockett.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeking council's approval and the vouchers in an amount of seven hundred and thirteen, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and ten cents.
Second.
All right, it's been probably motioned second. Any questions? Go right ahead.
I put in a voucher this evening. I just want to make sure that it made it.
Yours is in there.
It's in there. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. Here are no other questions. Roll call, please.
Altonan Lockett.
Yes.
Altonan Davis.
Yes.
Altonan Spidey.
Yes.
Altonan Edwards.
Yes.
Okay. I'm seeking council's approval for BS and A Local Government Software Agreement.
Second.
This was discussed, well, BS and A have been here at the city for approximately the last six months to enhance our software. And finally, we came to agreement to go with them. It's approximately a seventy thousand dollars a year savings for us here in the city, and it combines how the city operates. This is like from, for the water department, the building department, Public Works, administrative part of the city, where with this software that each department could communicate together than having separate softwares that's outdated and don't communicate with each other. So this is the sign of the time and the way to go, and I'm looking forward to getting this approved. And after the approval of this, it'll still be another six months or so before it takes full effect, the system itself, because they have to enter all the data and everything into the system from the different departments in order for it to work efficiently.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and an explanation. Are there any other questions? Here are no other questions. Roll call, please.
Altonan Lockett.
Yes.
Altonan Davis.
Yes.
Altonan Spidey.
Yes.
Altonan Edwards.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
End of my report.
Thank you. Next, committee report, we have Law and Ordnance Government Operations. He's not here. Next, oh, who's gonna cover that? Anyone?
Looking for approval for the BRT outdoor lease agreement for three digital signs.
Second.
May I be recognized, Mayor?
Yes.
Just had a couple of questions. I noticed a sign on the northwest corner of Flossmore and Cicero. I mean, that's a, where are they gonna put that? Where the planter is, or is that?
Yes.
Sort of built on top of?
The current, the current sign?
Yeah.
They'll take the current sign and put it right there within the planter itself.
Okay, and that's the same thing for the northwest corner?
Hundred and eighty-third and Pulaski. Yes, sir. It'll be digital. Right now, there are still signs, but those two will become digital, the same as the one that's on one hundred and sixty-seventh and Pulaski.
So again, this was discussed at the administrative meeting, and as the mayor said, it's the same sign that's at one hundred and sixty-seven and Pulaski across from the Walmart. And the good part about it, it doesn't cost the city any money for them to install these signs. And it kind of updates the city, give it a better, more modern look in far as advertisement than that goes.
Good communications, yes. All right, so there's no other comments. I have a motion and a second, I believe.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Altonan Lockett.
Yes.
Altonan Davis.
No.
Altonan Spidey.
Yes.
Altonan Edwards.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
End of report.
All right, thank you. I have, next, we have Public Works and Utilities, Altonan Davis Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I need a resolution number, Mayor.
Yes.
R dash three zero dash two three.
Okay, and I'm seeking council approval for a 2023 Community Development Block Grant. And this grant is a grant that we actually already have, the grant is two hundred thousand dollars, so it's more housekeeping, but the areas that we were gonna use for this grant is for the improvement of the city's sanitary sewer system. And the area that they were gonna actually target is around Cambridge Avenue and one hundred and seventy-fifth street, one hundred and seventy-ninth street to the north and one hundred and eighty-third street to the south. And once they do this, it'll actually stop us from basically having groundwater seeping into our sewer system.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Here are no questions. Roll call, please.
Altonan Lockett.
Yes.
Altonan Davis.
Yes.
Altonan Spidey.
Yes.
Altonan Edwards.
Yes.
Okay, next, I, just a couple of updates on the DECO, street improvements, it's all been completed, and the striping at the police department. We also, Marycrest Pond, that striping has been completed, and final inspection will be scheduled. And then the third item is actually the solar crossing signs at one hundred and eighty-third and Ravenslow and one hundred and eighty-third and Baker, they're operational, and this is where the children can actually, you know, press the button across the street, so. And that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. I have a motion, and did I get a second?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second?
Yeah, we're all ready. Those are just updates.
Oh, those are updates, okay. I like to vote, so. Get carried away here. Okay, so next we have, okay, the next we have Economic Development Planning, Altonan Spidey is the chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First, Mayor, I'd just like to go through a couple of items real quick. I spoke with the building manager for the Heritage Plaza, Mr. A.J. Jones, and he talked about the heritage signs being replaced, and they're gonna be replaced by acrylic signs. So they're measuring the signs out and getting those ready to take place up there. Also, I would like to announce tonight that we have a new business coming to town. We have a health club, Planet Fitness, is coming next door to Big Lots. So we're looking forward to having that come. I spoke with the owner today, so everything is pretty much going to plan, so we look forward to that, and I think that'd be great for the city. Here we have on a presentation from our EDC commissioners. Would you guys please step to the podium, please? The chair and vice chair. We have five businesses here in Country Club Hills that we're gonna honor for the Business of the Month. These are great businesses within the community, and we would like to have the community support our businesses, and they do a lot of great things and partner with the city for events and help out our kids and help out within the community. And we have our chair, Chairman Tom Hill, and vice chair, Ms. Benton, and we'll take it from there.
First of all, I'd like to say thanks for this opportunity, but unfortunately, the businesses that were supposed to be notified in the mail, it's not notified, so we would like to cancel it until our next meeting.
Still recognize them?
They want to cancel it to the next meeting because the business was not notified. They got Big Lots, right?
Yeah, Big Lots is here.
Oh. If any...
We have Big Lots.
Okay, is Big Lots here? Okay, we're gonna recognize. Is anybody else here tonight, please? We can recognize. Okay, come on, Chairman Hill.
We got Big Lots, Ms. Peaches Place Bar and Grill, Foot Locker, Forest Lumber, Hook and Reel, Cajun Seafood, and Extra Space Storage.
Yes, we are aware of that.
We went to visit all of the individuals. They informed us that they didn't get any notification. So we are here and...
Big Lots.
Okay, at this time, thank you so much to the city council, the mayor, for this opportunity as time has mentioned. I just want to say a couple of things before we present Big Lots with their award this evening. We look at several criterias for this award, and we really do appreciate the businesses coming here to Country Club Hills, because they certainly could have looked over our community and chose another municipality, but they chose Country Club Hills. And some of the things that we look at in terms of the criteria are the quality of the businesses and services demonstrated to the general public and community, cleanliness of the, of their appearance in the entering the service areas of the store or their business, how the consumers are greeted, was the resident offered an opportunity for employment, customer service surveys implemented, growth and improvement, was the store policy publicly posted, being compliant with the city ordinances, and they get standing with the city, that they don't owe the city any water bills or anything of that nature. And also, last but not least, contributions to the community in their philanthropic giving. So those are some of the criterias that we wish to share this evening and how they're selected. Hopefully, we will have the rest of the five, of the four chosen businesses will be here. And Mayor, if we could have them at the next city council meeting, we can make sure?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'd like to recognize Big Lots, who is one of our newer entities in the city, and we'd like to present this award. At this time, Mayor and Altonan Spidey, if you could come forward for picture-taking, and we have our commissioners here. We have our commissioners here this evening, too.
I want all the Altonan to come down, please.
Yes.
Altonan, can you all come down?
Business of the Month awarded, well, Mayor, I'll allow you all to do the due diligence to present this as well. Business of the Month awarded to Big Lots for dedication as a member of the Country Club Hills business community and service to the citizens of the Country Club Hills. Signed by James Mayor Ford, City Clerk Patricia Hudson, this date November thirteenth, 2023. Let's give them a round of applause for being here.
Thank you. More than happy to be part of your community. All right. Thank you. 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 that you make sure you do your shopping, uh portionary shopping over at uh at uh Big Lots, so thank you so much.
And Mayor, gonna be recognized, I just wanna say this, too, uh thank you, sir, for coming out, and it's very important that we recognize our businesses. You know, we don't have many here, but we do have some great businesses and they do so into the community. Mr. Whittenhour is the gentleman that owns the entire strip mall over there, and he is the one that's been working on this negotiation deal with Planet Fitness. So from the beginning, I've been in touch with him, we've been talking, and um I'm just glad that that this is coming here to our community. It's gonna be a very vibrant business that's gonna light up the strip mall there and bring other businesses there. So not only do we have an anchor like uh Big Lots, then we have Planet Fitness, and then other businesses will come. So him and I have been in communication and we're talking about trying to get some other things going, and I just appreciate the fact that he's moving forward on a lot of uh promises here in Country Club Hills. Thank you very much, sir.
End of your report, sir.
End of my report, sir.
All right, thank you. Uh we have Education Parks and Recs.
Thank you, Mayor. I met last week with school districts and I'm asking Alderman Lockett, Davis, Spivey, and the mayor that we allow them to use our website and our Facebook to advertise for meetings, Black History Month, Career Day, and uh certain giveaways. It is important that we support our schools because without our schools, we don't have a future. So I'm asking the council to support me and giving them the opportunity just to show what time their meetings are, what day that they have in meetings, also uh Career Day. I'm gonna work on scholarships for the seniors, uh I'm gonna work with them on Black History Month. I will be taking small businesses to the school districts so people, young people, seniors can understand how businesses work. I'm also meeting tomorrow with uh District two twenty-seven and some gentlemen from my ward, and people are coming from downtown to help us try to put two twenty-seven back together and make it a very prosperous and great school. Uh it is important that we and our community help our schools because they are our future. So Mayor, I'm asking that we have the right to let the schools use Country Club Hill website just for showing the events, Mr. Davis, just for uh showing what time meetings are and so on, on a regular basis. I would try to get in touch with Eric as long as the mayor says okay, they send it to Eric or me and then we put it on the website and Facebook. Uh the meeting tomorrow is gonna be very important, so I'll bring back to the council what comes out of the meeting. End of my report, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Motion to open the floor to the public.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably motion second. Um roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, thank you. Looks like we have uh a group here from the Hawks, is that correct?
Hawks.
Junior Hawks? You guys wanna come up to the mic and tell us what's going on?
We need someone to uh give your name for the junior Hawks and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Yes.
Oops. How you guys doing? Um my name is Jared, um Jared Washington, I coach for the Midwest Hawks. Um I'm particularly head coach of our eleven youth football team. Um we basically um, this is our third year, um basically going down to Nationals. Um we've been in the community uh for thir- this is three years. This is our first time actually coming to a meeting, um so we just wanted to come and show our presence, um let you guys know that we are in the community. Uh we have over around three hundred kids presently in our program, um from six U all the way up to thirteen U. Um we have a cheerleading team that is very awesome, um they've won multiple national championships since we've been um in existence. Um and uh we're just basically looking um to um let you guys know that um we're in the community, basically, okay?
We also made history this year.
Give your name.
My name is Tonzo Williams, uh with another coach for the Midwest Hawks. Uh we also made history this year. We uh we had six, uh no, eight teams, we have eight teams in the organization. Uh he's came out there and seen us. Uh we had, we had the babies, six years old, all the way to thirteen U, made the state championship game. Uh we had, out of those eight key, eight teams, we have three teams, no, four teams, actually five, five teams right now that are going to compete December first through December the tenth in Florida, it's called Plant City, for a national championship. Uh we work hard with these boys, uh we we ask them to do, work hard, we ask them to do a lot, and they 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 bust their butt to do, to get to Nationals, to Florida, through all the adversities we went through this whole season. Uh I'm quite sure you know, we had a, we had a family that uh, family of five, that's on, they have kids on different levels. They played with us and they was in a real bad car accident. Uh they're, they're recently now just starting to get out of the hospital, but uh championship trophies, we took it to the hospital and we gave it to them. Uh but we, we really, we we did the parade here, uh we, we based out of uh Community Park, uh we have, I'm quite sure you guys have had no problems with us at Community Park. I personally make sure, as well as the uh Country Club Hills, clean it up every day after we get done. Uh I make sure I clean up the parking lot. We had an event yesterday to raise money for the uh, for the uh, for our kids going out of town. And basically, we we here, we got some paperwork, we just asking you guys, if you can, whatever you can, every, any dollar, any penny counts. We have a lot of kids that's un- unfortunate, and it comes out of a lot of the coaches' pockets, and it kinda affects our household, too, at the same time. Uh so we're asking for any help that we can. We have, like, once again, we have a sheet here, if we can pass it along to you guys and let you see it, uh and just let you know, if you guys got any kids, grandkids, anything, bring them on over. It's a wonderful experience. As Coach Jared said, our cheerleaders are phenomenal. Our co- our, our football players, phenomenal, they're excellent. Guys can ever get a chance to come out and come to a game at Community Park, I guarantee you'll love it. But uh we also did, uh we just did tagging uh on the hundred and, right, right here on one hundred and eighty-third in Pulaski.
Eighty-third, yes.
And we did well for ourselves, but we still need more for all of these boys. Yeah, like I said, we have five teams going, so whatever, whatever you can, guys can do or whatever you need us to do, we will do it.
All right, thank you. We'll definitely uh, we'll definitely uh support you guys. Um who's gonna be the contact person?
We'll do it after we close the floor. After we close the floor, I'll take care of it.
You, you the contact?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to you guys in a minute before, before you leave, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Joni Harris. I'm in the Marycrest subdivision. This is my first time attending a uh city council meeting, and I want to commend you all on the good work that you're doing um in the community. I see a lot of changes that I'm very happy with. I have my grandson here. I want to um, I have two things I would like to bring to your attention. One is, I looked on the Facebook page tonight for the city council meeting and it wasn't there. Um if it was there, perhaps we had more people. Second of all, um our students are growing up in the community and they're attending our schools. Maybe they wanna aspire to be in city government. Maybe they should know how city government is run. A lot of them don't. They slide all the way through, go all the way out of high school, go all the way into college, and they have absolutely no idea the wonderful work that you all are doing for us. So yeah, I would like to make a suggestion that perhaps you could update the Facebook page a couple of times, you know, give out a little shout so that we know that the council meetings are here. I did go on the Village site, I did see that you guys posted the agenda for today. Thank you very much, I really appreciate that. Um if you could do something with the schools, the principals, that they can make an announcement maybe in the schools to say, hey, students are invited as well, not just your parents. Maybe you should tell your parents, the city council meeting's gonna be today, maybe you would like to attend with your, with your parents so that you know what's going on in the community. And that way, you can participate more and you could be more appreciative of what all of these hardworking people are doing for us in the community. Forgive me, I'm a little nervous. Second of all, I wanna say that I brought to the attention of Alderman Spivey that we have Southwood. My grandson is a first sixth grader over in Southwood this year. Yes, you know, we've had some problems with Southwood, a little behavioral problems, but we have a whole group of kids coming in now, and I've attended some meetings in Southwood, and there is heavy parent parental participation in the school council meetings, in the assemblies, in the school orientation. Um however, Southwood is a little in the dark. I brought to Alderman Spivey's attention that there are no school signs on one hundred and eighty-third and Cicero. There is one way in and one way out. You go, Wolf Park is on the other side, so there, excuse me, there's a majority, a lot of residents in that area, and they have one way to get out in the morning, and that's one hundred and eighty-third and Cicero. The traffic at Flossmore and Cicero and the traffic at one hundred and eighty-third and Cicero is heavy at that time. It's a fifty mile an hour, fifty miles per hour um speed zone there. The buses are stuck in the middle of the road trying to get through. I suggested to Alderman Spivey that perhaps we could um take the traffic lights at one hundred and eighty-third and Cicero and the traffic light at Flossmore and Cicero and delay them maybe five to ten seconds. That's not a lot of time, but I guarantee you, that gives the parents enough time to get out there, that gives the buses enough time to get out there, that takes the congestion out of that neighborhood and off of those streets in front of the schools, and it helps the security officers as well, the police officers as well, keep that traffic moving back and forth. Also, that's one street in and one street out, and the roads are crumbling. These are our students. We need to let them know that we care about them, their education is important, but also their environment as well. So I put that to you for your consideration. I thank you very much for the wonderful work that you're doing, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
If I can ask you a quick question, um I'm not understanding when you say one way in and one way out.
I don't either.
Um I understand that the, that the school in the mornings have it one way coming, but there's other avenues to come out of there. There's Baker, there's all the other streets that can lead you to one hundred and eighty-third.
That's Baker, that's John.
So I just, maybe everybody's just trying to go the same route.
Yes, sir.
But there's four other streets that you can exit from the school.
Yes, sir.
And the reason, the reasoning of them doing it one way because uh it was even worse back then, when you got people going both ways. So if you're coming in off of Cicero, you can only come in one way and exit out. Right.
And, and we worked that out with the school board, uh and that's the way that they, you know, recommended that we do it. Uh you know, we could take, and we got an officer that sits there uh at it, that prevents you from going farther east to the school, uh because the traffic then is going west, and that's what the Alderman's talking about.
Right.
And so uh that, that could be a discussion, that's a discussion we can have with the school board, but that's kinda the way that they requested it, so.
Yes, sir.
And, and the lights, uh that's an I dot situation. We, we don't, we don't uh, you know, uh decide on how the lights are timed and everything, that's I dot, so we'll have to get, get together with the state of Illinois on that one.
Yes, sir. Uh you are, you are very correct.
Yes.
I might say, even this morning, our school buses are late. They're, they're, they're more and more frequently late because they have to try to get across Cicero. I was a little child this morning in the sixth grade, up the tops, he was trying to cross that four, that four-lane Cicero Avenue by himself, and the cars were like this. I picked him up and brought him to school this morning.
There shouldn't be any...
If that, there's nothing on that side. There's, there's Marycrest, and then there's across that Cicero. There's nothing there. You have a lot of children in this, in this subdivision crossing that street if the school buses don't come or if they're late.
Okay, so now, that's the school board issue.
Understand, sir. I'm just bringing it to your attention.
I understand, because no kid's supposed to cross, walk across Cicero, they're supposed to be bussed across Cicero, according to the school board.
But if the buses don't come, they have no choice. They don't, they can't go back home, the parents are gone, so where's the child going?
Okay, well, let's discuss that with the school board, because that's kinda beyond us here.
I, I appreciate your time, and I will be at the school board meeting. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you so much.
I'm just curious, which parent leave a six-year-old to cross the street?
Sixth grade.
Oh, sixth grade.
Anyone else, before we close the floor?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Latonya Ruffin. I've been a resident for Marycrest for eighteen years, and I'm proud to be one in Country Club Hills. Um about a year ago, I came to a board meeting, I was very upset about water in my backyard. I spoke one time, new mayor, to Vinnie, to the city manager, and when I said you guys went to work, y'all went to work. I am very proud and pleased that I have no more water in my backyard, and it had been like that for years. A resident, all you have to do when you talk to the mayor, he's gonna go to work for you, as Sam Chapman said, let's go to work. When they cut my grass now, I see lines in my yard. So I'm very pleased with you, mayor, and everything that um Country Club Hills is doing in the town is looking very beautiful on one hundred and sixty-seventh all the way down to one hundred and eighty-third. I'm proud, I'm living right out there, and I wanna say thank you for that also. So I am very pleased about everything that you are doing with the town, and it's, my community looks beautiful. That fifth wall looks very nice, coming through there, coming home at night, feeling safe, and we just, it's just a quiet neighborhood, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Anyone else? We're gonna close the floor to the public if no other comments.
Close the floor to the public.
Second.
It's been probably motion second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Evans.
Yes.
All right, thank you, motion carries. Uh we're gonna have the automatic reports, we're gonna start to my right, uh Alderman Davis tonight and work his way down to...
All right, thanks, Mayor. If I can, I don't wanna um, for the pastor, he didn't mention his um, if it's okay, I can mention your Christmas benefit. Uh he's having a Christmas benefit musical, and Javon Watson, it's gonna be Saturday, November twenty-fifth, and it's gonna be from three o'clock to six o'clock. A good pastor in our community, and it's great to support this event, it's gonna have live musicians, uh understand from Lockett, one of them's really, really nice, uh, Javon Watson. Uh but this is, his church again is uh United Christian Church, forty-three fifty-one West one hundred and eightieth Street. Um also, I want to um congratulate Judge Fairman and Watkins. Had the opportunity to meet Judge Fairman on many occasions, uh proud of the work you guys are doing, and uh I commend you for your, your, what you're doing during this election season, um so I wanna just congratulate you guys. Also, the Midwest Hawks, congratulations to you guys, and uh I'll personally try to make some games as well, love to come out and just see what you guys are doing. Um want to make a, just mentioned the uh BRT outdoor lease, why I didn't support it. Um you know, obviously, I do support good things for our community, I just feel like we should've had more of an opportunity to have dialogue. I remember when they first came uh with one hundred and sixty-seventh, uh they came themselves and they did a formal presentation, and we were able to ask for certain things, and I just don't feel like we're getting enough. Uh it's a twenty-year lease, um and, and what they did with the sign on one hundred and sixty-seventh, every time they bring a new sign, that goes into that lease, so now we're another twenty years for all three signs. And we, we, we do get advertisement, but it's like uh, basically it states uh, we get, you know, at least uh one out of every eight positions, but even if we wanted more, we would have to actually pay the prevent, you know, the regular rate. And I just think, when you got something like that, there should be more opportunity to have negotiation. I mean, I know we talked about it on Thursday, but you know, I just, in the past, I remember us being able to vet things a little more, but that's the end of my report.
Alderman Lockett.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I would like to take a moment of silence to um to recognize um former Alderman and also um a chairman of the Fire and Police Commission, and his name is um former Alderman, Alderman Robert Beatty, who passed away. And also, along with Robert Beatty, um Gino Bosio, who ran the building department here in Country Club Hills for many, many years, and um and while I'm mentioning um former Alderman, for those who didn't know, Frank B. Martin, and also um our events coordinator, Joanne Wade. We've lost four former city employees uh within the last um ninety days or so. So we just take a moment of silence for them and their family. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'll also, um, want to mention Pastor Tiller and, um, your Christmas benefit musical. That, when you gave me this, you, you got me. Javon Watson is one of the best entertainers in the whole Southland. Uh, this guy, you can't go wrong with him. We've had him here, Country Club Hills, for our Fourth of July shows and opening of, of some of the concerts. And one thing, um, Davis mentioned to me that I didn't know that, um, not only is he our mayor, but, um, Reverend James Forbes is going to be there.
He's the storyteller.
Oh, okay. Uh, that's James T. Ford.
You got to mention that. He's the storyteller.
Okay.
He's, he's also a great guy.
Okay. Uh, but, uh, this is Saturday, November 25th from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And I'm telling you, with this guy, Javon Watson experience, you cannot go wrong. If anybody there, don't enjoy the show. I'll buy your tickets, okay? That's how great he is. Um, next I want to mention, um, the Hawks, um, the Junior Hawks. Very fine organization. Um, I will support you, but I do have, um, my kids are, um, Junior Hawk cheerleaders. So I got Braylin, um, Skylar, Leila, Lennox, Maddox, uh, so it's like five of these girls. And I was there last year when, um, and want to make sure that this year, this thing really, really gets recognized because these girls went and won the world. When I say world, I mean the world championship. They competed against everyone and they took first, second, and third. Now, just recently, um, the, um, the Junior Hawks, um, Schaumburg, Addison, somewhere up that way, uh, just came away again with, um, the first, second, and third, and then just four teams, right, um, even one on place. And then just this week, again, they won some first, second, third thing. So it's very important that, um, we recognize, uh, the Junior Hawks and the cheerleaders because this is really big, uh, for the Southland. Um, so you have my support. Uh, and I know how hard it was for the parents in what happened last year because they didn't get a chance to find out they were, they were going or placing in the, um, to the national competition till maybe a couple of weeks before this happened. And, and my hat goes off to all the parents that had to, um, that couldn't make it, that the other, uh, parents that could make it, how they were, um, had to, um, assist other children. And, and it's tough when you got six, 10-year, eight-year-olds and that, and it's seven or eight of them and it's 10 women there and you got 60 kids. You got to feed them. You got to make sure they're housing. You got to make sure they practice. You got to make sure they cheer. You got to make sure they get to bed. You got to make sure they're not sick. And it was around the COVID time, so, uh, again, my hat goes off. And, um, enjoy the weather. We're going to have some 60-degree weather out there. So for all of you who plan on entering the holiday, um, decorating contest, this week will be a great time to start, um, putting your decorations out where it's not too cold and that. And, um, i- if everybody look to the back, the guy James there from Public Works, he'll come volunteer and help you do climb your ladders and do all that stuff there. And, uh, I just want to wish you all, um, uh, Happy Thanksgiving and Happy Holidays to you. Thank you. End of my report.
So does that mean you're going to take on another five kids? All right, thank you. Alderman Spivey, next.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I'd like to say congratulations to the Hawks. I love to get your information and love to participate with you guys. Um, I think that's pretty awesome. Also, um, Ms. Harris, thank you for stopping in tonight. Um, we're definitely going to take care of those concerns that you have. Also, I would like to say, uh, hello and, um, it's good seeing Judge Fermer and Judge Walker. Thank you for all that you do and I look forward to helping you guys and supporting you along the way. Um, also, I would like to, um, take time out to let everyone know that I will be having my, uh, eighth annual turkey drive again this year, uh, here in Heritage Plaza, 4th Ward. Looking forward to, uh, fellowshipping with the community and help support and feeding the community. Um, also, I have great sponsors. I have, uh, sponsors with Phil Cross, Blue Shield of Illinois, Jewels, um, the Atrium, Rich Township. So a lot of people participates in this and to make it a, a very great event for the community here. So, and, uh, also, mayor, at my last meeting, there were some concerns that the residents had in the 4th Ward when it comes to, uh, Channel 4. They would like to see the 4th Ward being utilized for more, um, commercial events, like we have businesses here that's in the community. So people, I think that they should go out into the community and like interview the businesses so people will know exactly what businesses that are here. And also broadcast the meetings because some seniors can't get to the meetings and they really prefer watching it on Comcast. And another question they had is about, even though we have Comcast, is there a way that we can get AT&amp;T? That, I don't know if we could work something out, cause I know we have a contract with Comcast. I'm not exactly sure about that situation. But, um, I think that's something that needs to be done. So the community know what's in the community and who's in the community and show off the community, you know, because we do have a lot of great businesses here. Also, I just want to thank our commissioners because you guys do such a great deal, a, a great thing for the community. A lot of you guys have very awesome talents that you take time out to volunteer for the community. I just, uh, want to thank Tom Hill, cause I was, um, at Operation Push last week. And in this room, they have like a lot of different businesses of people that they have done work with. And I saw a picture of Tom Hill, uh, with, um, Mumbo BBQ Sauce and with Jesse Jackson. And he was like instrumental in getting that into the, uh, grocery stores. So we have a lot of people here that has a lot of great skills that like to volunteer and I want to commend you guys. And Tom, that was a pretty good picture back then, you know, still looking sharp now, you know. End of my report.
Okay, Alderman Edwards.
Oh, thank you, mayor. For the Hawks, your flyer, does it have a date on it when the money's required? I said yesterday. Well, I don't have no problem. I'm just trying to make sure that I can, me and the mayor and whoever else want to give you money, know how quick we got to write the checks. That's all. That's why I always ask for a date because we need a copy of something for our records. So I'm ready to write a check tomorrow morning if I, if I can help you. And I'm quite sure I can speak for a few of my Aldermen. We're ready. We just need the fly- flyer and what, you know, for our records, that's all. Okay? Usually it'll say we need the money by a certain date, so other than that, I'll write it tomorrow morning. It just, okay, okay. And, um, you have my support. Lockett, uh, far as the cheerleaders, they have my support too. Do I make two separate checks or do I make one for everybody? Two separate ones? Okay. And so I just need the paperwork to know exactly who it goes to. Second, for the, uh, Ms. Harris, the school district, I've been trying to work with Southwood. I just can't get no response. When you say have them come, I sent out emails, texts for them to show up and I leave it alone when they don't, period. Okay? Uh, for the judges, you got me. I'm working. All right? I might lose some weight in the cold, but I'm going to get out there and work. For, uh, we have a business owner, mayor. Can y'all stand up? She owns her own business. She's trying to get involved with the city, so she came out today. I'm going to introduce her to Jerry and let her pass her cards, but we need to support small businesses. So she came out today and I want to make sure that her card goes to the right people and even one to the mayor. Thank you for coming out. Other than that, I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's a pleasure and an honor to serve you. And I hope that we do the best we can to make Country Club Hill work. End of my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so, uh, just one thing that, uh, wasn't mentioned. We had a grand opening for Dot Container, which is called Solo Cup. Everybody remembers that from the city. Uh, they are here in the city of Country Club Hills. We were able to bring them in. They have occupied this, uh, facility on 183rd Street, just west of Cicero. And we all was there. Well, some of us Aldermen were there and, uh, it was a great time. And we wanted to welcome, uh, Solo Dot Cup, Cup into the city of Country Club Hills. Um, also, I just want to mention about the, um, uh, the BRT Sign Company. You know, all of these contracts with businesses that come to town, they are negotiated. The contracts are actually written up by the attorney and myself, the mayor. So we haven't, we, we haven't missed a beat. Uh, and we haven't given up anything. Every time we have a contract come to town, we gain, uh, uh, things from them. And so the Sign Company, we have even better access than we have with the one on 167th Street. So, uh, we just don't sit down and give away, uh, things for the city. We work with people to make sure that our best interest is, your best interest is in mine. Uh, with that, um, I would like to also thank the judges who came out tonight. Uh, want to wish everybody, uh, a Happy Thanksgiving.